Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for October 1st, 2024. My name is Carrie Martnek, Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few announcements to read. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to ending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29, 2023. Members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting might do so by going to North by Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. And now, I'll confirm Board members and persons anticipating the agenda are remotely present. It can be heard by seeing the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Here.
Anthony Zaiden?
Here.
Amy Pratsky? Oops, Amy Pratsky?
Delayed.
Oh, there you go. And Millie Milton?
Here.
Great. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Laurie Connors?
Here.
Okay, great. Now discovering ground rules for the meeting. For our presenters or applicants on the agenda, the Chair will invite each speaker applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer or not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps to generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yellow to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board will be conducted by roll call vote. For items of public comment, by phone dial *9 to raise your hand, in which to be recognized by the Chair. Please note party or phone number will be visible. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen, in which to be recognized. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed all public commentators, the Chair will call on each name and afford approximately three minutes to comment. There's no executive session this evening. So with that, we'll carry forward with our agenda for the night. First on the agenda, we have the public hearing to consider the definitive subdivision plan for 0201 Bartlett Street to create four lots. So I will bring in our applicant for that.
So it'd be Scott Weiss and Kelly Jordan Price.
All right, I see.
And John Eichmann, you might want to change your name, so you're not me.
If I could figure out how to do it.
Well, if we can't figure it out, so everyone's aware, oh, there we go. You're listed. Attorney Eichmann, the Town Council is here as well. Okay, is that everybody? Scott, from your team? Okay.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Great. Oh, and we have one more listed, Laurie, but you don't look like a Laurie.
Yes, I did receive another email saying that they didn't get the automatic webinar invite, so I forwarded mine. So you can put him in the waiting room. He's for 9 Goddard. And you might want to change your name, so you're not Laurie Connors. I guess Modi. Modi Said.
Okay, so let's see. We'll get that sorted out. Looks like that's all set. So Scott, welcome back. Is this your fault? You have everyone on your team here now?
Yes, yes. It's myself, Scott Weiss, with the Gutierrez Company, and Kelly Jordan Price of Hinckley Allen here tonight.
Okay, so tonight we're covering, this is the definitive subdivision on remand for Massachusetts Land Court. So we obviously have gone back and forth through our respective attorneys. Is there anything else that you'd like to address or present this evening?
At the Chair's discretion, happy to sort of give a summary overview. Happy to move right forward, however you want to proceed. Happy to take this up together with the extension request, the next item, or do them separately, however you wish.
Okay, we have it on our agenda as a separate entity to do the extension right after this. So Attorney Eichmann, is that probably the best path to just keep them separate at this point or combine them?
Yeah, let's keep them separate. That makes sense.
Okay, so Scott, if there's anything you want to address or present, or Attorney Jordan Price, anything you wanted to speak to or address? Has everybody seen a copy of the draft decision, Laurie, at this point?
Yes, so I provided the updated conditions of approval with the track changes that reflect the suggestions from our Assistant DPW Director. So I understand that they reviewed them, and they did provide one comment to the review letter. There was one condition of approval that the Assistant DPW Director had suggested that they had an issue with, went back and forth. He said that he was fine with leaving that condition of approval off. So it is not incorporated into the draft.
Okay, the MWRA condition. That's what we're talking about? Okay. Okay, and then from there, are there any additional comments from your team? Otherwise, I'll ask Board members if there are any comments on the latest draft of the decision.
No, we're good. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of history here. So we understand, and I think everybody's familiar with the project and the request, so.
Okay, great. Members of the Board, did everyone have a chance to review the decision and have comments or questions at this time?
I just had a couple changes I ran by Laurie today, so I'm just going to run them by. A lot of them are just housekeeping. If you go to condition, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right one. For A, it used to be number one, so it was a T. It says, "Modify the operations and maintenance plan to comply with Condition T." Condition T is now Condition 21. So it was just changing that because the numbers and the letters all changed with the last draft. So a couple of them didn't line up anymore.
Okay.
So.
Laurie, you had a chance to review that and that made sense?
I did, and she's correct. That was a typo. She corrected it.
Did you also?
One more.
That was okay with your team, Scott?
Yeah, I believe so. Bear with me just a second to catch up.
It used to be a T, but all the numbers have changed.
Yep. Yep, that is correct. We're good with the 21.
Okay.
And the same thing with number 25. It pointed in the second line to C2I, but now it's 3BI. The numbers have changed for that, too.
Okay, does everybody see that?
Yep, that works. Good catch, Amy.
So those were the two. And one other thing is usually when we talk about plantings, we always do "in perpetuity", and that was number 19. So when we talk about debtor disease plantings in the following planting season, we usually have it in perpetuity versus one year.
Wait, I did have that. I do have the language that says that they will be maintained in perpetuity.
Okay.
So are you saying that you want "in perpetuity" added to both sentences?
Oh, I thought the first one had to do with the roadway improvements. In perpetuity, I didn't know that applied to also the plantings.
That's my interpretation, but if you want me to add "in perpetuity" to both sentences, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I guess. We usually have them separate, I think, right? So then they both say it, but it's in one paragraph.
Oh, I see. It's combined under 19. Okay, I'll add that.
The first one says the roadway and improvements shall be owned and maintained by the owner in perpetuity. And then the plantings come second, but it doesn't say "in perpetuity".
Does the applicant see that as well on number 19?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, would that go at the beginning, Laurie? The beginning of the sentence?
You know, that's my interpretation, is that you're maintaining everything in perpetuity.
Yeah, and my understanding is consistent with yours, and I understood the sentence to just mean that, you know, you wouldn't plant in the middle of the summer just for something to die again. So you would plant, you know, as it says, "in the following planting season", right? So maybe not in midwinter or midsummer you're planting, but in the fall or the spring. And we understand it to be in perpetuity, and I don't, I did not understand it in any other fashion. So I'm just trying to make sense of the, you know, the grammar of the sentence.
I see what you're saying.
Where the "in perpetuity" would go and have the sentence still make sense. If you tacked it on at the end, it might be confusing. You're planting in perpetuity. It's, it's.
Right.
So maybe that covers it. So I think, Amy, you're reading that as you would only plant it in the following season versus like, that just happens to be when you'd plant it if there were an issue.
Right, right. Perhaps instead, Amy, Laurie, in the sentence before where it says "the roadway and associated improvements shall be maintained and owned in perpetuity", maybe the "associated improvements" should be parenthetically including landscaping?
Right.
Okay.
Does that work? And then the next sentence just says "when you're planting"?
Yep, that makes sense.
I will do that.
Those are my only changes. I did have some changes to finding a fact, but I don't know if the applicant or has those or that's something we talk about later when we go through the decision.
It's not really a condition.
Right. I don't know if the applicant got the full decision or just the conditions.
He did not get the findings of facts. So it was, it was pretty much the conditions.
Okay, so is that something we go through after? Do we make a motion? I'm not saying we do now. Other people may have questions. But do we make a motion to close and then we go through the decision with the finding of facts after?
Yeah, that's typical.
Okay.
Any other ques- so there was the MWRA not needed. Is there anything else here? Anything else in the conditions? Attorney Eichmann, do you have something I saw just pop on?
Yeah, just, just a question. If the Board's going to go through the findings of fact, that's fine. But if there's any questions about that, it helps to have the public hearing remain open so that you can easily ask questions of the applicant without concern about input from the public being foreclosed in any way.
Okay. All right, so we'd make, we'd vote and then keep the public hearing open, look at the decision, and then we'd close the hearing upon no further questions or information needed?
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I think you could go to the findings of fact right now, actually, and then take your vote, because I think the motion is going to reference.
Yeah.
The public situations.
Okay. Amy, is there anything you wanted to address in terms of the findings of fact?
Yeah, maybe it's easier if I share my screen. Show us a couple. Just want to make sure I open the right one. This is a. Okay. So I just want to go up. Like, the first one, the subject property at 0 Bartlett Street, it might be 201 Bartlett Street now, I noticed, is in the industrial district. And it said partially in the groundwater protection overlay, but I went to the GRS map because I know I've done it before. And there's like a small sliver that's like less than 1% that's not in groundwater. So before the other decision, it's actually almost entirely located in groundwater protection 1 and 3. So it's just changing partially to almost entirely.
Okay, do you want to just go through all of them and then we'll swing back around?
Sure. Actually, at the very top, I want to ask Attorney Eichmann, like, this is a subdivision decision, so it's not for use because this is just for a subdivision and a subdivision road. So I was wondering, shouldn't the document decision for definite definitive subdivision plan approval for the property located at 201 Bartlett Street? Like, I don't think we approved the industrial activities just now because if there's a use that comes forward on the subdivision, that's a separate permit. Like, it's a separate site plan or a special permit. So I wanted to take out industrial activities because we're not really approving any industrial activities tonight. We're just approving subdivision of the land and the building of a road.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely fine. Yeah, you're absolutely correct. You're not approving industrial activities. That's informative, essentially. It gives the Planning Board an idea of how the property will be used so that it can properly apply the subdivision regulations. But yeah, it's a little bit potentially misleading the way it's stated. So if you wanted to simply take out in that first paragraph, instead of saying for definitive subdivision plan approval for industrial activities, you can just take out for industrial activities. Do you want to take out on the?
You just said approval for the property.
Yeah, take out industrial activities on the, so that would say, or on, so it would say approval for the property located 201 Bartlett Street.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Yeah. I just think it might be misleading, like, this subdivision is good for eight years and we won't be the Board here in eight years. So someone eight years later will say, oh, well, they already approved all the industrial activities.
Right.
I just want it. Well, I've been here for 10 years, and now I see it coming back on other applications. The devil's in the details. So, okay, so that's where I started. And then findings of fact, it's almost entirely in the groundwater protection overlay districts. The applicant proposes to construct an industrial subdivision and privately-owned roadway. And I added, but maybe we don't have to because I took out the first part. I added, "Any use or building would need to be submitted to the Planning Board via the appropriate application process." I was just making it clear in the future that this is just for the road and subdividing the property, and it's not for allowing any use.
Hey, Amy, just let's catch that one while it goes by. I would leave that out, and the reason is not because it's wrong. It's just that it might suggest that it's a limitation rather than just a reference as you have it there. There may be other permits they need as well, so I think I would leave that out.
Okay, now that we fixed the top, it, it helps, I think. So on number four, it talks about the different properties and how many square feet they are, the front, and. Finding of fact, and maybe this doesn't have to go here because it happens when we approve it. I mentioned that lots B1 and B2 will have open space restrictions on them, except for the parts of the parcels. But maybe that doesn't go in there because are the findings of fact something that happens before the decision is made? Like, after the decision is valid, then there will be open space restrictions, but right now there aren't. So I didn't know if that was some finding of fact that needed to be in there or didn't when we were describing the parcels.
Yeah.
And those are conditions of approval, so. Personally, I don't think it's appropriate to put them as findings of fact.
Okay. But even the subdivision talks about the parcels, and right now it's just one big parcel. So the way it was describing how it would be broken up, I was including the open space, but we don't have to. But it did say, it mentioned lot B1 not to be considered buildable, and H2 is not considered buildable. So at that point, I said, I talked about the open space, too.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest leaving it as is because what you're talking about here is division of land into lots, which is what's being described, and that's correct. That's what a subdivision is. And then the open space restrictions are actually not forming lots. Those are areas of lots that are subject to that restriction. So that would be more appropriate in the conditions where it is. I think it's fine as is.
It was included in the special permit where it talked about 48% of the project site is wetlands, and there are 25 acres of priority habitat. Because that is a finding of fact of that lot. It's for, I, I feel like the finding of fact like lays out a picture. So someone eight years from now, when they're looking back at the decision, if there's a question, can look at the finding of fact and look at where the site is. And B1, B2 have frontage. So I don't know what you think about adding that. It was in the original decisions. It doesn't, you know. It is a fact.
Amy, could you just tell us the language you want added? I wasn't sure I heard that correctly, this sort of word.
Does it update when I'm removing things? Like, I updated. I took out the open space. So what I was talking about was the part that says more than 48% of the total project site is wetlands, and there is approximately 25 acres of NHESP priority habitat. That was a finding of fact that we had on previous decisions.
I don't, I don't have any objection to it. I mean, you're essentially describing the parcel. I think, you know, the subdivision's decision is still going to be about the division of land and the creation of the roadway. But I don't think descriptive things like that are improper here. It's just, you know, it, it's a little outside of what you're doing with subdivision, but it does inform to a certain extent why you did what you did. So I wouldn't have an objection. I leave that up to the Board.
Board thoughts on that?
Again, I think it's, it's, it's okay, but it doesn't really impact the, you know, the conditions or anything.
Any objections from Board members on describing it?
No.
Okay.
Number seven, I crossed out the ATM because that ATM went with the special permit. And when we go down to the conditions, it says that the applicant in number one has to apply for an ATM for the subdivision. Like, there was an ATM for the special permit, which is true. But for this subdivision, it, it said if we go for a subdivision that you have to apply for a new ATM and go in front of the CONCOM and Public Works. So I felt it was misleading to just write that they issued an ATM permit because the ATM permit that was issued was for the warehouse and the special permit. It wasn't issued for the subdivision.
Laurie, could you address that? I think you put that in there, and I had a question about that as well.
Well, I put that in there because later, so what I was trying to do is make the case that they had previously granted approval for a development project that was very similar in nature to the subdivision roadway. So I was trying to, to show that the Board had done its due diligence and as a condition of approval was requiring it to be updated.
It is a little confusing, though, to put it there and then to ask for it. It would be really difficult to remember the distinction on that one. I don't know, Board thoughts on that? Attorney Eichmann, why did you flag it? Did you question if it was confusing or you just thought it was not necessary?
Yeah, I flagged it, number one, for the same reason Amy pointed to it, which was the way it's written, it says it issued an ATM permit. And I just assumed that meant for the subdivision because that's what we're talking about here. I didn't read it enough within context to say that July 10th was a reference to the special permit, which, as Laurie's saying, it is. So it could probably, if, you know, to keep it there, if, you know, the Board wants to keep it there as a sort of a description of what's happening, I think a little extra language or working of this language to make it clear would help. I was, I was, it was missing words at the minimum, I thought.
I think if you wrote that they previously issued for this, for something, or, you know, issued a previous permit.
I think I would leave it off. Because these are supposed to be the finding facts of the subdivision. I don't know. I find it confusing because then we're telling them they have to get it. And it doesn't really matter. Once this is approved, Attorney Eichmann, if it's not there, it's not like make or break because they still have to go for the ATM anyways if they do the subdivision.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, it can certainly come off, it will affect the decision.
I would lean removal because I do think that's confusing, and you'd really have to know the history to understand the nuances a little bit. I don't know, Millie, I think you're saying, like, maybe just change the language, but we're in it, so we understand, we understand it. But if you're a third party, 10, eight years from now, you may not. I don't know, other thoughts on that, Bill or Anthony?
Yeah, I mean, you either have to change the language to say it previously issued and will need a new one, you know, as noted below, or you just take it out.
Yeah. Preferences?
I'm fine with taking that out.
I would say take it out.
When in doubt, take it out.
Scott, I think I caught you had your hand up at some point. Did I, did you, did you have something?
I, I was trying to just quickly verify the percentages that were referenced up above about the wetlands and the priority habitat. And I don't know if, Laurie, you, you confirmed those just to make sure the, the right numbers?
Let me look at the, I, I know that it was in the original decision, and I did not include it because I thought that it was making the case for denial. So, but let me just, I got that decision right here, so let me just verify that.
Okay, and I originally got the numbers from the site plan. There was like a legend on one of the site plans, original for the special permit, and it said how many percentage or how many acres were wetlands and how many were priority habitat. So that's where the numbers originally came from.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure all the, the, the lotting and the land area that's being talked about in both pieces were the same so that you can take numbers from one and apply them to the other. And I haven't been able to confirm that just yet.
Okay.
And I, I am looking at the old decision, and actually, I am not finding that fact, finding a fact in this decision. So maybe it was in the site plan decision instead?
Yeah, Laurie, it is. It's finding effect number three in the remand site plan decision.
Okay.
Okay. It's important because if someone comes in the future and wants to amend the decision, you have to have so much upland to be able to build. So like 48 acres or 48%, it's on the, on the, I don't know. And we went through all this years ago when we did the site plan and the original special permit. But it was, it was important, the numbers.
Okay.
That way you don't have to look it up again. Yeah, number four says the total project site includes 4.28 plus or minus acres of NHESP priority habitat species 1286 and 20.68 plus or minus acres of NHESP priority habitat species 1278, 37.72%. Thirty seven point seven, two percent of the project site is a N H E S P priority habitat area. So those numbers don't coincide with what was in the, um, remand decision for site plan approval. If you add that up, it's four point two eight plus forty eight point one, seven, fifty two point four five. Doesn't add up. So four point two eight acres of one and twenty point six, eight of another.
If I may, just throw one additional comment on that. And, and again, I, I, I don't have that that mapping in front of me. But the mapping for a priority habitat for a species for two different species may overlap. They're not necessarily distinct areas. So you may have a certain area that's a hap- priority habitat for one species and it may include, you know, there's four point two eight acres and then twenty point six, eight acres might encompass the four point two eight, eight or four point two eight, or it may be addition. I, I, or it may be partially. I, I don't know without having that mapping. Uh, it, you know, available to, to look at. They're not necessarily mutually exclusive areas.
Okay. So we just can't add them up?
You may not be able to. I, I, I again, don't have that mapping in front of me and I don't know if it's known on the definitive subdivision plans themselves. I don't think they were identified.
So it could change it to say exactly. A lot of these said approximately. So I tried to add the two together and said approximately twenty five. So the sentence wasn't as long. But, um, we could definitely break it out and do the four point two eight of priority habitat. One, two, eight, six, and twenty point six, eight of priority habitat, one, two, seven, eight. And just take it from the other one and just put it in instead of saying approximately twenty five.
So it's one, two point eight, six?
It's, um, twenty point eight, six acres of one and four point two eight acres of another. So it's approximately twenty five acres, but they're two different priority habitat numbers. Okay. One, two, eight, six and one, two, seven, eight.
Why don't I just copy and paste the same finding from the site plan, special permit decision into this one? If that makes you feel more comfortable.
Yep.
Okay. So why don't we do, that sounds fine.
Madam, madam chair, could I make one suggestion? When, if we're going to copy that in, could we, uh, make an explicit reference that the information is coming from either the site plan or the site plan decision? Cause I'm not hundred percent certain how uh, current this information might be when it was first gathered or things have changed.
Sure. Lori, is that something when you add that to, you have that written down to fix?
Um, we know the source of the sentence.
It will be a little awkward. But I'm sure John can help you with the language.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't know the appropriateness of referencing another decision on a finding of fact for, uh, something that's was submitted. Uh, like maybe, maybe that information was not included in the subdivision submittals that I'm referencing above.
Right.
I'm wondering if we can just leave it off to be safe.
It's the same property. So I don't know why it changed, but.
But that might not have been submitted with the subdivision information. Uh, I don't know. Because it wasn't in the finding of facts for the subdivision initially. It was in the finding of facts for the special permit and site plan review decision.
As long as it's used in the special permit, cause when they go to build, if you subdivide these lots and it's not sixty six acres anymore, with all the wetlands you have there, there may not be enough upland to build what they were previously going to build. So as long as all that information is still used when they go forward, depending on which way it's built.
Well, if they're doing a modification, so they're no longer going forward with the warehouse, then they'll have to submit a new application with new information at that time.
Yep. So if, if they subdivide and now H one only contains less acreage, say it's twenty nine acres. I don't even know how much eight hundred and sixty six thousand. I don't have a, in front of me. It might throw off all the numbers of the special permit if this lot actually does get subdivided because is it getting subdivided differently than it was? Like I think when they did the warehouse before, they used the whole parcel, all sixty six acres to get a lot of their numbers. So now if you're building a warehouse on a smaller parcel, you might not have the numbers you need to build a hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse. I'm not sure. I'm just saying. A lot of times you can't subdivide off because you need so much upland. And then if you're cutting off parts of it, then do you meet what you need to meet to build the building? I'm sorry if it's confusing. I wasn't planning on asking that question, but I know, I think there was somewhere in the bylaws saying a certain percentage of the parcel has to be contiguous upland.
Well, the roadway of course, uh, is upland area. So they're not proposing to fill wetland area to construct the roadway. And they weren't proposing to fill uh, wetland area to construct the driveway. So I, I don't know how that would be any different.
Okay. I can ask you off. Have to ask an engineer to think my question, what I'm thinking and I could be off base. So.
I think I understand what you're saying, but I don't know how it applies to today.
Right. I'm just saying if they cut this off into four different parcels, it might change the numbers that they won't be able to build what they wanted to build originally. That's what I'm thinking, but I'm not sure for sure.
Hmm.
Well, they've already been permitted for the warehouse. So this subdivision doesn't change that.
But weren't they permitted to build the building on sixty six acres? And they used all the calculations like impervious coverage and everything went on the original acreage, right? Actually I have the drawing in front of me now.
Yes.
H one now says it's only nineteen point nine acres. But the original acreage used for the warehouse was sixty six acres.
Hmm.
So I don't know. I'll have to look at that separately, a different time.
Okay. So for the purpose of this, do you intend to, um, figure out keeping that line or just removing it?
We can remove it if everybody wants to.
Um, thoughts on that from the board on whether we keep or remove?
I mean, I, I don't see the harm in keeping it, but again, like I said, I don't think it's going down the road that, that discussion is, is to be held in the future.
I mean, I just want to make sure we have the right numbers if it's a finding of fact. And I didn't see it in the, I only could find the preliminary in my files. I didn't see the final one. It's very, I couldn't find it quickly, but Lori, you couldn't find it either in the or this.
You know, of course this is coming out of the blue. So I, um, I don't know if it's in the application file or not. I, I have the plan right here. Um, but it's, you know, of course it's got pages and pages of tiny notes.
Right.
Um, it's not jumping out at me. It may have been part of the development impact statement where there was the discussion of the environmental analysis. Um, it which may or may not have been part of the subdivision submittal. I don't know.
Yeah, Carrie, I, I think I'm with you as well. If we, if we can't prove for a fact what this is, then it shouldn't go in as a finding of fact, right? Um, my other concern would be that, you know, sometimes, you know, depending on species migrations and things like that, th- these numbers could change, right? It might've changed since the first time that this report was done.
Report was done for both of the, like they didn't do a new report for the subdivision versus the special permit. It was all the same information that we got.
Right. But that was even before my time. And so you're talking at least three years.
Yeah.
Right. But that's the information that we're basing this decision on because we're not getting new information. So all our decisions tonight are based on the information that we originally got. We'd have to do all the reports again if we wanted to change anything.
Then.
Which we're not. Everything's on that original, all the original information. That's all our finding of fact.
But I guess my point is that that was a finding of fact for the site plan approval decision, not for the definitive subdivision decision. So that information may have been submitted with that filing, but not with this filing.
Right.
Okay. So when you do like a road in a subdivision, they don't have to break down wetlands or any of that?
You know, um, had we discussed this in advance, I could have reviewed the submission information to be able to verify. But I'd just be guessing wildly at this point because the submittal requirements for uh, special permits, I plan review are different than the submittal requirements for definitive subdivision. So it may or may not have been submitted. I don't know. I'm just guessing. I'd just be guessing.
Okay. So attorney Eichman, based on that, what is your recommendation on what we do here?
Yeah, my, my recommendation would be to leave that out and for one reason primarily, and that is that there's already a lot of confusion on the board about what including it means and whether it's accurate and relevant at this point in time. That that confusion can only increase over time. Um, to Amy's point, I, I think, yeah, those are important factors for subdivision improvements on a plan. But my thought would be that those would have to have been taken into account when the subdivision plans were done. Those plans become part of the decision. Um, those are the plans that are being approved. So I don't think it's lost by, you know, proving it without making an, an explicit finding of fact here. And I would tend to want to use findings of fact to do things that were not explicit on plans or in other documents that were filed. In other words, to, you know, draw conclusions from what was submitted. So I think to the extent that we're just referencing what we think is the case based on filings, and I don't think we need to repeat it because it, it seems to be causing some confusion.
Okay. Amy, is that okay with you to?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Cause it probably is on the drawings.
Okay.
All right. So when I went to number eleven, like it says the planning board found the application as complete and technically accurate. And I do feel I did under guidance from staff. Like I felt like I based my decision that it was application was complete and technically accurate from like the letters from our engineers and from Lori. And we've never had that in any of our findings of fact. So I just thought it was a lot to say that it's technically accurate because I know I relied on, um, the engineers and Lori to tell me that it was completely accurate and technically accurate.
And I flagged this in one as well because that was part of our issue originally that it was not complete. I'm sure it was technically accurate, but it wasn't complete. So I don't know why we put that. Can we just take that out altogether? Cause I don't think factually that's.
So, so what I did is I went into the, um, definitive subdivision requirements. And they had specific things that the planning board must find in approving a definitive subdivision. So that's why I included these things. And I know it's been a very long time since you approved a definitive subdivision. I believe the last one was Harrington Lane and that was in twenty one. So you haven't had a lot of, um, experience approving definitive subdivisions. I'm not sure when the last time was before that. But, uh, that is why this language is in there. It's because it's in the subdivision uh, regulations.
To include this language in the findings of fact?
Yes.
So we must include it, even if it's not factual.
Well, i- if you don't believe that it's factual, then I suppose you wouldn't include it. It just says that, you know, as part of, uh, proving a definitive subdivision, this is what you need to determine.
And I think that's why we denied it from the beginning because we didn't have the latest A M and we didn't have the latest from Concom. So but that's why I was including under guidance from staff because I think staff told us that you don't have to have the latest A M or you don't need to talk to Concom until afterwards. So I don't know. I added under guidance from staff because I, yeah, the original, what we did find is we didn't think it was complete and tech, you know, maybe technically accurate, but but I think we were told that by accepting these other forms, then it, then it should be complete. I don't know.
Attorney Eichman, do you have thoughts on this one? What we must put in here?
Um, I understand Lori's point. Yeah. She's pointing to the criteria for approval of definitive subdivision plans. Um, I mean, I think that's a that would be a standard condition of approval of any subdivision application uh, that the application be complete. I do understand that it is, was an issue of the original denial. Um, uh, and I don't have any issue with Amy's addition that says, you know, something to the effect that planning board found in the lines on, you know, materials submitted and review of technical staff that the application is completely technically accurate. If that's fine. If that's what the board wants to do. I mean, I think we, we've agreed just to remind everybody that, you know, the the application as far as ownership approval is, goes, we, we've agreed that it does not require M W R A sign off at this point. So I don't think we want to create an issue here.
No.
Obviously by saying something's different than that.
I don't think it was just about that though. So I'm just wondering like, do we have to explicitly say it? Or can we just leave it out altogether? Does this have to be a finding of fact? I guess. Is it necessary for the decision?
No, it doesn't have to be stated. I don't think so. No.
Um, so if we don't actually have to state it, I, I don't think this is true. So I don't know. Other board members, what are your thoughts on this?
Are you, so you're saying to take the whole line out completely?
Yes, just remove it.
Number eleven, right?
Yep. I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
I think the same thing from the next one. Like it was the staff and state entities, like, you know, the, um, habitat people said, you know, it's okay if you build on top of the habitat as long as you give them a new habitat. Do I think that will not cause substantial and irrevis- irreversible damage? Hmm. I don't know if I agree with it, but under guidance from staff in the state, we were kind of told it's okay to do. And that's what they do all the time. But if I had to say with a good conscience, do I find, do I agree with it? Not really.
Hmm.
So for the same one, it's like, can we take it out or under guidance from staff in the state, our hand was kind of, you know. The decision was made.
Madam Chair, just briefly, it's with, for the same reasons that we talked about with eleven, twelve, and thirteen could both come out. They are criteria in the subdivision regs. But number fourteen covers exactly what by law has to be done to approve a plan, which is determine that it's in conformance with the rules and regs of the subdivision control law, and that's what you're saying. That's sufficient. You don't have to have eleven and twelve and thirteen notwithstanding that it stated this criteria in the regs.
Okay, so that's good clarification. That was, I flagged at least eleven and twelve. I had a question mark for thirteen, fourteen, I even questioned, but it sounds like we need to keep it. Um, I don't know how other board members feel. Amy, are you, you sound like you're Millie, Anthony, Bill?
Yeah, I'm good with taking those out. But if we actually leave fourteen, it makes sense, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, then I think we actually ended up going through them one at a time, so is anything else there?
Oh, um, no.
Um, Madam Chair, right? If I may, um, I and maybe this question is more to Attorney Eichmann, um. Uh, I and just, I'm I'm trying to understand, uh, I I understand that the request Amy had about putting in perhaps, you know, we're under under input or with input from staff or whomever. Is the decision completely valid without those findings? And I guess Lori's input as well, because I thought I heard said that the the um bylaws require those findings to be made. And I understand the differences uh, that that, you know, Amy, you or others on the board may have differences of opinion on that. But uh, um, I'm not sure that that everybody would be in agreement that we haven't satisfied those requirements. Um, so I I'm just, is it a val- is this decision valid without tho- those components with those items being removed?
Attorney Eichmann, do you have a opinion on that?
Yeah, I do. I think I think it will be. Um, I thought personally, when I reviewed the these requirements or these criteria, they're listed as criteria in the subdivision regs. I thought they were a bit um unusual, let's just say. Um, and I I think they're best interpreted as essentially guidance for the board as to what they need to consider. When they're applying the subdivision regs to the plan, because the state standard, which the planning board cannot vary is if the plan complies with the rules and regs, it has to be approved. And this is, these aren't necess- these criteria um, don't necessarily give you specific things that you comply with. They're really more, we shouldn't be looking at these things to make sure that when we apply the subdivision rules and regs, that these things are being um, addressed, I guess, that all these possible um impacts are addressed, so. I I'm fine with it. I mean, and the other thing is, if you approve the subdivision plan, then you don't say that it's not in conformance, it's going to be assumed that it is in conformance. So I think I'm fine with leaving them out.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at past, I don't think we have historic, when we've denied, we include it because we want to show that it was not. So it's almost like it was flipped to just to be an approval versus denial. So I'm just looking back. I know, Lori, you mentioned we haven't looked at this in a while, but when we did look at it, we looked pretty closely, and I I'm just looking here, I think, at the old decision, and I don't think we necessarily did that, so I'm comfortable. I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, I'll make those changes.
This one too, I have all the it's up to you, but you probably got them all.
Okay. Anything else there? It looks like the other edits were just adding, uh, what's in red is Lori's edits, I see, I think, from before.
Yeah, some things I leave in red, just as a reminder that if's if's it's different from what I have listed there to change it.
Okay, great. So that's not an edit. All right, perfect.
Okay, I'll stop sharing.
Okay, so then with that, um, any further discussion on this? Any other questions? All right. I don't, I think we can safely close the, I'm sorry, are there any, um, this is a public hearing, is it? It is a public hearing, so if there are any comments from the public at this time, I will take them. Okay, I don't see any comments at this time. So with that, um, I think we can safely close the public hearing. Attorney Eichmann, do you see a reason why we should not close a public hearing?
I think that's correct.
Okay, great. So is there um, a motion to close the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan for zero two oh one Bartlett Street to create four lots?
So moved.
Second.
Again.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Um, okay, I just have to switch um, documents here. One second, please. Okay, um, is there a motion to grant the application to approve the deficient definitive subdivision plan entitled Plans for Nonresidential Definitive Subdivision of Land Parcel H Way, Zero Bartlett Street, Map Fifty-One Lot Three, and Map Sixty-Six Lot Sixteen, Northborough, Mass, dated December seventeen, twenty twenty, last revised February fifth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Allen and Major's Associates in accordance with those findings of fact, one, oh.
Ten.
Um, one through ten, and subject to those with conditions one through twenty-five as set forth on the draft decision presented. So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna give Bill the motion and Anthony the second. All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy? Millie?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. Um, next we'll move on. I think we keep everybody here for um, public hearing to consider modification of a decision for special permit for industrial activities in the groundwater protection overlay district area three, a special permit to extend industrial use into the more restrictive groundwater protection area one, and site plan approval to extend for good causes to your lapse period to April twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, to allow the construction of a hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred plus or minus square foot distribution center, industrial warehouse for zero two zero one Bartlett Street, formerly included a portion of three oh one Bartlett Street. So why don't we move on to that one? Is there anything you wanted to add or present on that?
Um, a- again, at at the chair's discretion, happy to, you know, add, expand, expound, whatever uh, you would like. Uh, we did submit a letter uh, requesting the extension, given the 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 changed market conditions and uh, and uh, we would respectfully ask for that uh, extension uh, in association with everything else that we've discussed and considered.
Okay, um, board members, any questions or comments?
Any question? It just came out today, so I'm just looking at it quickly. The decision, now back to the findings of fact. And um, oh no, it's the wrong one, never mind. I was just wanting to make sure, all the findings of facts and everything from the original decision stays the same? Are there any changes?
So Lori, are you aware of any changes?
So these finding of facts were specifically geared to this request for an extension, so no, it does not include most of the findings of fact from the original decision. So this, this is only for the extension.
So if you, so if they were going to do this special permit, they still have to go back to all the original findings of fact and all the original stuff?
Correct.
So I was just wondering why the finding of facts. Okay, I guess some of them changed and some of them didn't. Why it wouldn't include all the original ones and then add the extension?
Yeah, because like I said, these were specifically geared towards their request.
For the extension, not for the original.
Yeah, correct.
This allows the extension, but they go to build the special permit, they go back to the original. And everything's followed. There's no modifications.
Madam Chair, if I could just jump in quickly, Amy's correct. I mean, she, her concern is, I think that that the special permit conditions, as granted, will continue to apply. They absolutely do. This is not a modification of that permit. That permit remains untouched. The only thing that we're looking at here, the board's looking at here, is whether the lapse period for that special permit, that's the period that it's imposed by law. It's not really a condition of the permit. It's imposed by your bylaws that says you have to begin substantial use or construction within two years. That's the lapse period, and what they're requesting here is that that lapse period be extended to a certain date. So special permit, if this lapse is granted, will remain as is with that, with all those conditions, with all those findings of fact, nothing, nothing with that will change.
Is there anything that says that in here? Like, can that be like a finding of fact that nothing from the original permit will change? Because when I look at the decision, it says that the modification of the special permit and site plan approval shall not take an effect until the town clerk is recorded. So it makes it seem like it's being modified, and I know you're saying it's being modified only to do the extension. But is there an easy way to add a finding of fact that says all the original conditions and, you know, findings of fact with the original permit stick?
Actually, what I would do is I missed that modification language, and I made those revisions today. I would change that to the way I changed it in rest of the decision, which is basically make it say that this is a request for extension of the lapse periods. I would take that out. Um, it's it's not a modification. That's misleading. Um, I would make that change.
Okay, so under where we're looking under decision?
Yeah.
Okay, Lori, are you seeing that same spot?
I'll change that.
Okay.
I didn't have time to read this one, because it came out this afternoon, like. So I don't know, I'm a little nervous about approving, I can, I had approved the extension, but I would love to read the decision before you know, it's set in stone.
The uh, the motion would change as well. So the motion that I sent you uh, this afternoon, I received John's modification after I sent you the, that motion. So I can read the motion to you when you're ready. Or better yet, John can, John can tell you what the motion should be.
I I think Carrie has it, because she had the last.
I do, I have the revised from Attorney Eichmann. I don't, it's not, it's it's specific to the two-year lapse.
It is, yes.
I think that it is. That's what you added. That's exactly what you added.
Right. Yeah, I I I, it took me a couple days to get back to, maybe three days to get back to Lori with these changes, so I, yeah, I the late review of this is is attributable to me. Um, and I I don't think I anticipated properly that um, that this was the one that was going to require all the revisions. We basically paid no attention to this decision to this point other than to agree that in the settlement, that it would be something that we would address, but um, when I saw it, I realized it needed more revisions than I I thought, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Just to Amy's point, though, I think, Amy, if maybe to assist your review, if it'll helps, helps at all. Um, there are no, you know, conditions attached to this. The findings are really what makes this a decision of the board. And those findings are essentially six and seven. That's what makes this an effective decision. That's really where you put your intention. The rest of this basically just sets the stage for those findings.
Okay, so when we look at six and seven, we're um, for anyone, uh, so we're just saying the applicant asserts and the planning board finds that current economic conditions are not favorable for the construction of industrial warehouse style buildings such as permitted here in here in, excuse me, and then seven is the proposed modification meets the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw.
Actually, I I made some changes for that, too. Did that get forwarded into the board?
I I did, um, but that came in maybe at uh, two thirty this afternoon, two o'clock.
Okay.
I can probably pull it up.
Oh, I see it. Um, it had, starts with.
I sent you a clean copy.
Request.
Uh, so it's uh, it doesn't have all the scratch out. I thought it might be easier for you to read. So there were two documents. There was one with his track changes.
Oh, I see.
There was another one with, it says clean copy.
Yep, I got it. Okay, so hold on, I can share that. Goodness, here we go. Let's see if this works. Okay, do you see this? The applicant has testified and the planning board finds. Is everyone seeing that? Hmm. Okay, so Attorney Eichmann, this looks right to you, and and the title is clean copy, so I think this must be right. So.
With the changes we talked about in the decision, yeah, this would be it.
Okay, so you added a bunch of stuff. All right, great, so.
I just wanted you, could somebody point out where in this decision it states it's going to be the exact same special permit with the exact same conditions?
It's, it no longer says modification. If you go to the first page, Carrie.
Yep. Am I still going?
Yep, that's it. Request for extension of lapse periods.
I think where I saw modification was under the decision.
So if you keep going down, is it, so that's originally where I thought we needed to change it too. So like modification down here, is this where we are also changing it?
Yep, so that's what we just discussed a few minutes ago, so I'll change number two and number three.
Okay.
What's it gonna say?
So now it's gonna say request to extend uh, to April, uh, actually, it might just probably just says the request to extend shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certificate. Is that sufficient, John?
Yeah, we can, we can um kind of tweak that language, but yeah, just instead of modification, it's gonna look a little more like the title of this decision, although it might not be that lengthy. The title is now a request for extension of last period's applicable to the special permits that were issued on such and such a day concerning this property. Um, and so instead of saying um, this modification shall not take effect, I would say this uh, could be something like the this grant of extension of the last period is applicable to, I think I defined them, the permit shall not take effect, something along those lines.
We have the finding of fact saying there is no modification to the special permit and site plan granted on whatever date it was granted, twenty twenty-three. Just so it's laid out there that this, I know you've said it, that this is just um extension, but actually have a finding of fact that there is also no modification of the conditions or decisions granted by the special permit on April X, twenty twenty-three. That way it lays it out that this is definitely just a time extension. There's no modification of anything.
That's fine, yeah.
Uh, wouldn't I add that? Uh, I think it might be more appropriate to add that to paragraph one under decision. So it would say except as modified herein the conditions of approval of the original uh, special permit, et cetera, what are are in full force and effect.
That's fine as well. You could add it there.
So wouldn't number three of the findings of fact cover that? That talks about our decision.
Yep.
It's just not specifying that there's no modification to that decision.
You can add it to number three, saying, you know, this decision, there there will be no modification or changes.
I don't think that's appropriate to put in the findings. I think that's more appropriate to put in the decision.
Okay. I just wanted it to be clear. Because there could be a new board, and they're like, you know, they could be confused.
Okay, so it sounds like that's okay to put in the decision. There's no issue with that. It's really eating, okay. And these, so then we'll edit modification to the extension language, and then anything else?
We're really agreeing to if we don't see what is being done. Like, there will be changes being made. Like, there will be changes being made behind the scene, but.
Right.
Right. So again, just six and seven as, as edited and hopefully now everyone has that in front of them. I basically spelled out a little more clearly, I think, what was originally said. So that, again, those are the findings. That would lead to a decision to extend the last period.
Hmm. Yeah, and that helps the applicant, but I want to make sure we're protected too by saying there are no changes.
Okay, so it sounds like we have that covered in the decision part. Um, any comments or questions about six or seven, since those are the ones that were primarily focused upon?
I think we're in good shape.
Okay. Okay, any further comments or questions? Anything from the applicant on this one?
No, no further questions. I think we uh understand the changes and all in agreement that this is an extension. The original permit remains in full force and effect uh, with no changes other than the extension of time. And as long as the final language reflects that, I think uh uh, we're, we're in full agreement and I think that's what we all expect anyway.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, any other comments from the board? Or staff? Okay.
Have a copy. Once it's updated, can we get a copy of it sent out to the board? Into the applicant just to review?
Sure. So I'll send it out to John first. And then uh, when I receive his feedback, I'll send it out to the rest of you.
Okay. So any uh, again, this is a public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, I don't see any public comments. So at this time, I am going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved?
I'll give that to Billy. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Bill?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Billy?
Hi.
There is an I. And then is there a motion to grant the request to extend to April twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, the two-year lapse period applicable to those two special permits and site plan approval granted by the planning board and filed with the town clerk on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three for the construction of a hundred fifty thousand nine hundred plus or minus square foot distribution center, industrial warehouse, and associated improvements on the property located at two oh one Bartlett Street and zero Bartlett Street, subject to findings of fact, one through eight with can wait a minute, we didn't have any conditions on this.
Oh, yeah, that, you're right. That should come off.
Okay.
With conditions, they assume.
It's uh, findings of fact, one through seven.
Okay, um, subject to findings of fact, one through seven.
And as amended for our discussion tonight, right?
I don't think we amended any of the findings.
Oh, no, but don't we have to amend the decision?
Yeah, you can add.
Yeah, it's just a motion, so. I, I've noted the amendments that you wanted.
Still moved?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, a motion was made and seconded. All in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Amy? Billy?
Hi.
Here is an I. Okay, great. So I think that squares up everything. Um, I don't have, I think that's it for you guys. I would think.
It is. I, I appreciate it and I know it's been a long road and we appreciate everybody's uh, work and attention and dedication to this. And so we thank you for all of that.
Thanks for working through this and um, enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
I'm gonna sign off if that's okay.
Yes, thanks for coming. Thanks for helping.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so let's see. Um, next we have a special permit per groundwater protection overlay district and site plan approval for construction of a demonstration pad with canopy and associated improvements at nine Goddard Street. So why don't we bring in that crew?
We have three Evans, so I suspect that they are all our applicants.
Okay, great. Great, I think I gave it a shot, Owen. I don't know if you're having better luck. There we go. Um.
There you go, Lori, how are you? Carlos with CEC representing uh, the, the project team with the civil engineers on the project. I believe we have John Hambrick and Modi side with us on the phone as well, on the call.
So there's actually no Evan here?
No Evan. Evan was the one that coordinated everything. Unfortunately, he had that. So we'll all, we'll all put on a fashion beard and do our best impersonations.
That's hysterical. Thanks for joining. Um, is there, would you like to present your applications to me?
Sure, uh, happy to go through the slideshow, give you an overview. We understand also that there was a request to get an update on the master plan, uh, what's happened on the site over the past few years. Uh, so we're happy to provide a brief overview, uh, and then ultimately take a look at what might be warranted in terms of updates moving forward.
Great, thank you.
I will share my screen here. I think you have to slide it with taskbar gets in my sorry about that. Okay, uh, and I can't move the taskbar. Hold on. Hold on for a second. I have to start on the other screen and do it that way. Yeah, there we go. Sorry about that. Uh, so the project we're looking at is a uh, spray lab project, uh, which is part of an ongoing uh, development at the St. Oban campus, uh, located on Goddard Road. Uh, it's relatively small addition for the project. Uh, the site, uh, which you can see here with the yellow outline, uh, partially in the town of Marlboro or in city Marlboro, partially uh, in Northborough. Uh, the project that we're looking at here is a, a small addition, uh, which is essentially a outdoor concrete pad with a roof canopy over it, as well as some interior building renovations. Uh, it's about twenty-five hundred square feet of interior renovations, uh, essentially just repurposing existing space that's already there. Uh, and then the canopy and the concrete pad outside are about twenty-six hundred square feet and then some uh, ancillary uh, improvements at the doorways as well too. So some minor changes uh, around the perimeter of the existing building. Uh, there's no real change in the operation of the site or the number of employees. Uh, therefore, there's no real change in trips or the activity uh, or parking requirements. Uh, it's really a, a minor modification uh, to the existing site here. Uh, everything's fully compliant with the zoning ordinance as relates to setback and overall uh, impervious coverage on the site. Uh, we are located uh, within the groundwater district too. So uh, that's why we're in front of you for the special permit aspect of this review. So I'll walk you through some of the uh, proposed improvements as part of the project here. Uh, so the existing conditions, we've got a few photos here. Uh, you saw that the location is essentially located along the highway. Uh, it's kind of back to house operations. It's not really visible to the public or even to the folks that uh, would be employed or, or uh using the office spaces of, of the facility. Uh, there's an existing fire access road that wraps around the back of the building. Uh, and you see there's an existing transformer. There's some concrete pads out there today, uh, essentially a CMU block building. Uh, the concrete pad would be located essentially here where the existing transformer is slightly larger, as you can see in the plan view. Uh, we'll be installing erosion controls, so perimeter uh, filter sock uh, and perimeter controls for the erosion, uh, and demol- demolishing a little bit of uh, underground electric utilities, uh, that currently go underneath the building. Uh, and we'll be relocating this existing transformer, uh, as well addressing the utilities that are on the face of the building here. Uh, so some minor changes to accommodate the new concrete pad. Uh, and it will all be open on the side, so it's not enclosed, so fully open on the sides, just basically a roof over a, a concrete pad there. Uh, and this is the view, uh, looking at the other side of the building. So looking here and looking uh, westerly. Uh, so the canopy would be in this location. Again, back house operations, pretty good vegetated buffer along the perimeter uh, as well as a chain link fence there as well, so screened from the adjacent areas. So uh, the demolition erosion control, we talked about it briefly. We'd have a silt sock around the edges to provide any sort of protection that happens during construction, very limited uh, excavations for the footings and foundations there. Uh, everything would be temporarily stockpiled uh, in the immediate vicinity here and taken off site as appropriate. Uh, and then essentially demolishing the existing concrete facilities and cleaning up the facade of the building to accommodate the new connectivity to the canopy. The proposed uh, development, uh, fairly straightforward, uh, a new concrete pad. There's some uh, equipment that would be located here underneath the canopy. Uh, there would be drainage within uh, the canopy here as well. That would be uh, contained and pumped out as appropriately if needed. Uh, and then all the stormwater I'll talk about in a second from the roof area uh, is addressed with new stormwater recharge. Uh, where you can see also here, the proposed interior renovations of the building, uh, again, also entirely contained within the existing building, uh, within spaces that are currently used, just being repurposed for a slightly different use. Uh, and then some small concrete pads at the building doors to be able to accommodate the exit from the uh, the building there. Uh, and from a grading and drainage perspective, uh, we did submit something initially. We received some minor comments back from the planning department. Uh, we updated the plans to include some additional uh, detail and information as it related to the uh, proposed approach. Uh, so we will have a uh, a gutter and a downspout along the edge of the canopy. We'll collect the runoff, pipe it underground to stormwater chambers, which are sized to recharge the one-inch water quality volume. Uh, and then the stormwater essentially uh, overflows and it continues uh, in a westerly direction through existing swales uh, to some of the other uh, existing drainage infrastructure that's located on site. Uh, and then a small portion of the runoff here, uh, essentially we're maintaining that existing drainage pattern where it flows to the north and it continues northward, uh, also to existing drainage infrastructure on the site. Uh, and then there's a small concrete area out here that doesn't have a roof over it. So we have a new drainage inlet that collects the runoff and conveys it to the subsurface chambers as well. Uh, so fairly straightforward approach. Uh, we did include calculations in the uh, proposed application. Uh, however, we understand, uh, Department of Public Works might want to see a formal memorandum, so we can certainly repackage that up uh, and provide it under the cover of a uh, drainage analysis instead of an addendum to the site plan of your application. Uh, the special permit compliance, we did take a look at all the criteria. So it relates to the uh, the groundwater uh, overlay district. Uh, and taking a look at compliance with harmony with the master plan and the other previous approved plans. Uh, the project is in compliance with the approved master plan from two thousand and seven and the overall drainage approach uh, proposed under that plan. Uh, so certainly consistent with that. Uh, the site is zoned uh, for the industrial use and the use is consistent with not only its zoning, but what's also approved and currently occurring at the site. Uh, so consistent with the existing activities. Uh, it's not going to affect the neighborhood. Again, it's a back of house operation adjacent to the highway and also screened by existing vegetation. Uh, so we feel it's consistent with the uh, the surrounding environment. Uh, there's no real nuisance or hazardous uh, to vehicles or pedestrians. Again, no additional traffic, no additional employees or staff uh, generated by the proposed project. Uh, and it's not really going to impact any pedestrians in the area as this is not an area where we would expect people to be walking around. Uh, and then proposed operation, the appropriate facilities, uh, there are again elements incorporated into the design of the slab to control uh, runoff from the roof areas as well as any sort of uh, operations within the pad itself. Uh, there is a uh, a drain underneath the canopy that can collect any sort of uh spill that might happen out there, uh, and that would be collected, pumped and disposed of appropriately. Uh, and then as far as conforming with any special requirements, that special granting authority obviously will comply with anything, uh, the board deems to be appropriate. Uh, and it's also not in a historical area. Uh, so fairly straightforward as it relates to compliance with the special permit. One was already granted for master plan. Uh, so essentially, uh, just a smaller special permit for this uh, individual smaller project.
Just a clarification on, it's, this is not a special permit for the use. This is a special permit for groundwater?
Correct.
Okay, so do you have a separate part that's the compliance of groundwater? Special permit?
I do not have that broken out, uh, in terms of the individual aspects of it, but I can speak to the groundwater uh, design as it relates to what we've done. Uh, again, we are complying uh, and recharging with the, the one-inch storm for the additional impervious areas. Uh, so we are providing additional recharge, although this, the site was already master planned for a certain amount of stormwater compliance recharge. We're providing this for just this project in addition to everything else that's already on the site. Uh, so we did analyze this and treat this uh, on its own merit as if it were a separate project.
Okay, so we do have specific um, requirements for a groundwater special permit, though. Lori, is that something that's been reviewed or? That's your on mute. I gotcha.
Yes, yes, I remembered. Um, so I did ask Josh, our assistant TPW director, to review uh, the various, they did provide a report that talked about um, the treatment of hazardous wastes. Um, and uh, so that was included within the submittal package and uh, certainly Josh reviewed that. He did also review the groundwater calculate, the stormwater calculations that were provided. And he did not have an issue with the application. He did provide a letter with some suggested conditions of approval, which I have reflected in the draft decision. And I did provide those uh, draft conditions to the applicant so that they could review them in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
And we did review those conditions, uh, and the team was amenable to some of the things that were identified in there in terms of, I think, some clean items for the overall site as it relates to one comprehensive operations and maintenance plan for the overall uh, facility as opposed to smaller ones for the individual projects as they got developed. Uh, certainly, I think that that would be a good way to make sure that the operations and maintenance for the entire site are done effectively. Uh, as well as some updates to some of the other master plan activities, which it seemed like the, the letter was more geared to as well as the additional uh broken out separate stormwater report as opposed to an attachment to the special permit application. Uh, so we're certainly amenable to all those uh, items that were identified in the draft uh, conditions.
I have a quick question.
Sure, Amy, go ahead.
Um, so it's part for Lori and part to the applicant. So Fred used to do all the groundwater reviews. So you're saying, um, we have a new assistant TPW director, um, Joshua, and he's doing that now?
Correct.
And I know Fred used to go through a list of like chemicals. Was there a chemical list of what's going to be used on the pad or in the new building, in the new room? Because I know Fred.
They did provide, um, in the package, a report that included chemicals. Let's see.
Is there someone on staff that reviews those? Because I know sometimes like Fred would have them stored in like a safety container, a safety cabinet. So they're not just like in containers in the ground?
Yeah, so the, the information that they submitted was called the Lab one ninety-nine and demonstration pad air permitting applicability review letter.
Okay.
Is that something that Joshua, I mean Josh reviewed?
So they have various uh, product names.
Mm-hmm.
And they list the annual usage and the um, emissions. And he reviewed all this information.
Josh did. Josh did. He didn't feel like there was. A cabinet needed or any storage, special storage area?
So of course he reviewed those for uh, so what they're proposing to do is to um this demonstration pad. Is uh from what I understand is gonna be used uh a maximum of twenty-one days per year. And they are going to be hand applying. Um these these chemicals. To uh materials, actually, I I probably shouldn't even describe it, I should leave it to the experts to describe exactly what they're going to be doing. So no, no materials are going to be stored outside.
And that would defer to, uh I don't know if Modi uh can be unmuted, but he might be able to speak a little bit more to the operations of what would actually be occurring here at the pad.
Sure, that'd be great.
Sure, so the uh any uh any uh products that will be brought to the uh. Outside canopy or concrete pad, it will be inside these cabinets that you see on the screen here, it has these on the left hand side. Uh they are like an underlay and uh they have these doors shown. Those cabinets will will have the uh products in them and uh. For showing purposes, uh obviously the pad will be used to show clients, demonstrate to them these uh. Various products, but there is no intention to store them outside. And whenever they are on the pad, they will be inside these cabinets, they will be brought in the cabinets and be contained.
Okay, so what happens when, what is going on the pad?
Um on the pad really is just the clients showing up. Uh and being uh showing the products. Uh for demonstration purposes. Uh but there is no uh uh much activities going on in the pad as of uh you know. You know, um storage of material or products.
What did you say the pad has a lip around it and a drain, so if there is a spill, it's collected?
So yeah, if there is any extent to a spill on the pad, it will be hundred percent contained within the pad. There are trench drains. Surrounding the pad from uh all sides, so nothing can escape the uh the pad. Also, the pad itself um is sloped towards the middle. Um with a uh. The trench drain as well in the middle to contain any type of liquid spills or or anything like that.
But if you're spraying, and I'm assume, I mean, this is called the spray lab facility, right, so I'm assuming you're spraying, doesn't that aerosolize the? Uh the liquid and therefore it would be able to be blown off the pad in the air?
Yeah, so.
Speak a little bit Moody about that?
Go ahead, John, yeah.
Yeah, no, sorry, so we won't be spraying at all on this outside pad. Just for that reason, because we'll have overspray and we'll we'll actually get it onto the pervious surfaces. The o- only spraying we'll be doing is inside the lab. In a uh an approved spray booth, which uh currently has not been installed, but.
But if you're demoing this to your clients, then what are you demoing?
Well, the spraying will. Will be in the booth with the clients, uh the only thing we're doing outside is all hand-applied stuff, so it's basically like. Uh peel and stick, um waterproofing material. The other stuff that's liquid is, it's essentially cans of paint. And they'll apply it to like a mock-up wall or a mock-up roof that they're gonna build inside the lab with the dust collection system. They'll take it outside and show the contractors how to apply it to the roof. Uh it's basically water, no, there's no spraying outside, no. That they're not permitted permitted to do that, no.
My only other question, well, I I'll give. I'll give the floor back to Amy, I do have another question, but I'll wait cuz it's on a different subject.
I was, well, it's more like I was the French strangers that are gonna come next. And they're gonna collect into a sump. So when there is a spill, it's collected and you said it's taken off to the appropriate facilities.
Yeah, so the this material that these lab folks are using, it it's in a liquid form and um. But it dries very quickly into a solid. So you know, even if there is a spill. I mean. You know, somebody would have to, it's like a five, it's it's essentially like a a gallon paint can, so somebody spills, it would wind up on the concrete. The best thing to do is to let it dry and then. Take it up at that point.
And to and to that point, everything does pitch, there is a small pitch on it, it all drains to a inlet that's in the middle. Uh that has a a volume to be able to contain it, uh and then it will get pumped out and disposed of appropriately.
My question is to Lori, like Lori, I know Josh was kind of taking Fred's place, it sounds like this is our first groundwater meeting without the engineer. That we've had in town forever and um. Usually he attended the meeting, so we could ask him questions. But will um. Josh be going out on site, Lori, will he be the one checking the system that he reviewed to make sure? You know, it's doing what we needed to do to protect the groundwater to area?
Yes, so he'll be doing the inspection and then at the completion of the work. They're gonna be submitting an ASBIL plan. So he's gonna be verifying that the ASBIL plan complies with the approved decision. And then um the applicant is also going to be required to provide a certified letter. Uh from the design engineer. That the stormwater mitigation measures are uh installed and operating as designed.
And there was a stormwater operations and maintenance report that's gonna go with all this?
So they are asking for a waiver from that? And uh possibly you could explain why you're requesting that waiver?
Sure, uh I I think part of the reason for it is because um the concept would be that we would put together uh an overall. Over stormwater management plan uh that would address not just this one small area. So that St. Cobain would have five different O and M plans for the stormwater on the site. Try and consolidate it all into a larger plan uh so that there would be a single. More clear and comprehensive O and M plan for the overall development. Uh and I think that is reflected in the uh draft conditions that were included.
Kind of wish, like maybe for the future, Lori, I'm not sure if Josh will agree. But I think when we, at least from my opinion, when we have groundwater applications, like he should probably attend our meetings. Cuz we could always ask these questions to Fred and he can answer it on the fly.
Okay, yeah, I'll ask him to come to the next one.
I don't know what others think, but I know I have a couple of questions for him and he's not here.
Yeah, without, so I also struggle with that a little. Especially with all the hazardous materials here, I. Having an ex- mention of it, Josh, I feel the need to like. Circle back on that one, it's a little, I don't know, sorry, I had them gonna say that?
Yeah, I I did, so uh we don't permit any employee to store chemicals outside. All the chemicals will be stored in the hazardous waste room, not the hazardous, the hazardous storage room, that's inside the lab. It's specifically designed. To store uh these chemicals and they'll be in cabinets inside the building with um the appropriate amount of ventilation. So we won't be storing any chemicals outside, they'll bring them outside to show the uh construction folks how to apply it. But then it goes right back inside.
And what if they spill it on the ground, what happens?
Yeah, we'll have to clean it up.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
Like is it, you know, gonna kill us all in the meantime, just like those kinds of?
No, so they they use these products on, you know, residential roofs, uh they also use them on roads and bridges. So it's quite commonly used outside, and like I said, when it when it dries, it 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 hardens, it doesn't stay in the liquid form.
Uh Amy, did you have other questions there? I know Bill had some questions too.
Right, no, it's just, it's just hard without Josh, cuz Fred would say like, you can only have five gallons outside at a time. And it has to be in this type of container, like he would lay it all out for us, so it's hard. To make the decision without a Fred here or a Joshua here.
Uh well, I also wanna add that the the pad itself and the containment. Is designed to meet all the EPA requirements for a secondary containment. If there is any spill or anything, it's high percent contained for any accidental spill. And uh you know, we talk all the precautions and design to ensure that uh there is uh there is uh no. No way for these uh chemicals to get out of the pad, they are handled through closed containers, enclosures. Until they arrive in the pad and when they are being handled, you know, they are high percent isolated from the outside.
So Bill wants to ask his.
Yeah, I was reading, um Bill.
Yep, thank you, um one other question I have, so um the fire road that is back here is for emergency vehicles. Um you mentioned that you're gonna be having contractors come in to re- to look at this. I'm assuming, a- and you know, I don't wanna assume, but I'm assuming you're not gonna have any vehicles parked. On that road, the contractors are gonna walk through the building, correct?
Yeah, they're gonna park that pad. Yeah, they'll have to park in the visitors lot, which is in the front of building three right there, uh where the mouse is pointed. They're required to sign in in our lobby and then they uh walk through the building to the lab. And then uh on the pad from there, and so yeah, nobody's allowed to park back there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um other question, and so when I look at this, um there is no need for the fire chief to weigh in at all, just along those lines of. Doesn't really make sense.
He was provided with a copy of the application and he didn't submit any comments.
Yeah, I think he's well aware of this project.
So I.
Wrote a letter.
Yeah, so I feel like we're missing some key documentation here, I would love to hear explicitly from, I I really appreciate your explanation and walking through the safety of it. But I wouldn't, I feel like someone on staff here should also look at this and say, yes, that is absolutely the case. Versus, I I don't see that reflected here, any mention, there's always mention of the chemicals in our letters usually, and there's not. Um so I feel like that's, and that's not, I I feel like maybe we need to. Take a closer look, um I don't know, do other board members concerned, I have a, I've got some, Amy, it sounds like you have concerns about that.
Right, and I would like to get fire chief's letter, whether he's for or against, like he deals with a lot of the chemicals. Like I know he didn't reply, but usually he does reply and say, I don't have a problem with the application. So it'd be good to have that as part of the decision.
And that he's reviewed it, been provided and reviewed it.
Yeah. I feel like there are a lot of pieces missing that we normally have on a groundwater application. And was um, I know they mentioned they wanted to waive the stormwater operation maintenance plan. And Joshua had written, the new master plan should include a stormwater operation and maintenance plan for the entire site. Is that what you mean by not having five and now there's gonna be one or?
Right, yeah, so as the development has gone on, I I think there's been an O and M plan that's been developed for, you know, little piecemeal approach to the overall development. Uh which makes it, I think, a little more challenging to stay on top of it, so we would work uh with St. Cobain. To identify all the stormwater facilities on site and consolidate all those plans into a single plan, that'll make it easier. Uh to provide the O and M and then also report back to the town uh on the work as it's completed.
But um Lori had mentioned you wanted to waive the stormwater operation and maintenance plan.
For this particular small site.
Oh, for that site, cuz you're gonna do one big plan?
Correct.
And it's gonna be included?
Yes.
And so getting back a little bit to Bill's question about, so Bill, you were asking if there are any sort of aerosols, but. And I thought I heard you say there are no any, there are no emissions, but then I see a list of emissions, so could you just clarify what you mean, like? When you have a list, so table three has a list of V uh VOCs and HAP emissions. Could you just talk a little bit about what that is, or I just see a lot here that I don't know a lot about?
Yeah, so what what Tetra Tech was getting at there is um this is basically caused by evaporation. Not from spraying, there's a different table in that document that shows what will be sprayed in the booth, which is inside of the building. So yeah, this is just natural evaporation. Yeah, they they're, the the lab owners originally asked us if they could spray outside and we basically told them absolutely not, so. It'd be difficult to contain overspray. Yeah, so we we did purchase some quite a nice spray booth inside the building.
Okay, so this, I see, so. The spray booth is inside or it's outside?
It's inside, it's in, it's actually in the lab.
So there's no spraying that goes on outside of the booth?
No, no.
Well, I guess, are you currently permitted to spray all of this inside?
Yes, yeah, that's in Tetra Tech's report, um there's a filtration system.
Gotcha.
That complies with all necessary codes.
And in in terms of like just your demonstration, um what are you doing outside then with your clients?
Oh, like I said, it's basically like um some of the materials are peel and stick, uh but most of them are, it's it's essentially a can of paint. And you apply it to a surface, show them, show the contractors how it's done.
Okay, so you you're gonna be applying material or chemical, whatever the material is outside, but it won't be sprayed?
That's right, yes, yes, sir, yep. They use rollers, paintbrushes. But yeah, absolutely, no spraying.
So, but the list in Tetra Tech.
Yep.
Is a can of paint, it sounds so simple, but there's like a list of thirty different chemicals here, is that? The list that includes every chemical that could be, or is this what's in? Just to clarify, are these all different products, or is this the chemicals within one product, or what does that look like?
These are all the products that St. Cobain manufactures and that we. That the lab owners will show the contractors how to apply. There's other things on this list, you know, like mineral spirits, they'll use that to like clean a surface.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, like, most of it's silcore, which is a waterproofing material. I don't, I don't work in the lab, so I don't. Particularly know the details on on all these materials, but um. I do know that when they dry that they're hard.
Also clarify, uh John, the uh.
Yeah.
You know, the the Tetra Tech report was really meant for the environmental permit.
Correct.
For the interior use, we put with it the canopy outside as a courtesy to give you a full. Um comprehensive view of what's happening inside the lab and outside now.
Right.
Not every chemical being used is within this list, I mean, there is chemicals be exclusively used inside the spray lab. There will be some products used hand-applied, like John said, you know, for demonstration purposes outside on the pad. Uh also, to also um to make sure it's clear, the pad is not gonna be used every day uh throughout the year. It's only gonna be used certain parts of the uh year, uh mainly during warmer seasons. Uh you know, for client events uh mostly, so.
We did find, when I was on the groundwater committee before, Fred did review all the products, whether they were inside or outside. Cuz I don't think any applications we ever had were outside, so. It'd be, are these chemicals that you've had in that lab all along that the town already knows about? Or these, it's a whole new lab with new chemicals?
The lab was uh, was in Cambridge, Mass, um. And now they're moving it to Northborough. It's not completed yet, the interior portion, that won't be done until February. And yes, that will need to be, those chemicals will need to be added to our ongoing list. Which our HSC department handles with the town of Northborough.
Right.
Okay, something for an application Fred would always go through as part of the application, inside and outside all the chemicals. And the fire chief.
Yes, yep.
So, Carrie, I I just have one more thing. Oh, go ahead, Amy, sorry.
No, go ahead, but I do think before we make a decision, we need to hear from them.
Okay, Bill, you had something there?
Yeah, so that Terra Tech, uh, I I was just looking through that on page seven. Uh, right at the bottom, it has emissions, and it says emissions from the demonstration pad will include V O Cs and H A Ps. So, how do you get those emissions, especially of V O Cs where you're not spraying anything?
Uh, just evaporation. Yeah, a lot, a lot of these products have solvents in them.
Uh, okay, so V O Cs, I I think we've had a come before the board, we've had a lot of discussion on the board about, um. I I definitely think we need some sort of, so so I appreciate you sending a full list here of what could be, but I think as part of the application. Um, as part of the special permit, I think it's, we need, it's the list of all chemicals, pesticide fuels. And other potentially toxic or hazardous materials to be used or stored. Um, accompanied by a description of measures proposed to protect all storage containers, facilities from whatever. It goes on in the bylaws of what we require. And I'm not sure we have that with us, and I do appreciate you, you know, being transparent with all that's there. But I don't think this, unless Josh looked at something different or valued something different, I do think when we hear V O Cs, like. A cancer-causing agent, it gets into the air, it gets into the water and lungs and all of that. And I just think we need to know a little bit more about it, or have a more thorough review. Personally, I don't feel comfortable at this point. That I have the information to feel comfortable with this plan. I don't know how the board members feel.
I'm I'm with you on that. I feel like we need a few more pieces of paper to be looked over and signed and um. You know, tidied up with, with the whole plan.
Yeah, I would, I would agree kind of how we've done this in the past with the list of different agents using um, a sign off from the chief. Obviously, and um, yeah.
Yeah, just to be clear, we we won't store any of these materials outside. That's not uh permitted anywhere on our site.
Right, so it's whether it's used or stored, so it sounds like you're not storing.
We are using it though, correct, yes.
So it's just used or stored. Um, just to make sure that, I mean, obviously, it's not our necessarily our area of expertise. So I just wanna be sure that someone who it is area of expertise gets a chance to do and make sure. Um, so Laurie, I don't know if that's something Josh has even expertise with, or if we need to consider some sort of resource to really take a look.
Um, uh, I can, I can reach out to Fred, um. I I I'm not sure, I I did expect him to come this week, but I have not yet seen him. Um, I believe he's wrapping up this week and then he's gonna be done. But I can ask him to sit with Josh and just kind of go over the list with him. And make sure that Josh understands exactly what he should be looking for.
Okay, that would be.
Fred's satisfaction, if if that makes you feel better.
I think so. Other board members?
Yeah, and if Fred could go through the whole groundwater, you know, not just for this applicant, but for all applicants. What he does for his review.
Well, like I said, he's done, so.
Right, he could show Josh what he usually does.
Okay, so why don't we leave so that we wanna, we wanna make sure that we make the best of your time here, so. Um, I think it also makes sense to take a look at the different waivers to make sure that's something that the planning board is just. And a preliminary discussion is okay with, so that if, when you do come back, that you, you know, we don't have to then piecemeal this one at a time, so. Um, it looks like you've requested a couple different waivers. Um, so I'm gonna start at the beginning with the waiver of the requirement to show engineered cross-sections of proposed new curves and pavements. And vision triangles measured on feet from any proposed curb cut. That seems a little evident based on what you're doing here, but any explanation you wanna provide with that?
Yeah, no, I I think just because we're not doing work near any place that would impact sightlines or cars leaving or entering the site. Or really, that's intended for, you know, driveways and areas that would have vehicular circulation. Uh, it's not really applicable to this particular project.
Okay, uh, board members, do you have any questions or concerns with that waiver, just so the applicant understands when they leave tonight?
I don't, no.
Okay, so it's like no concerns with that waiver. And of course, this is not a vote, necessarily a vote, but at least it gives you an idea. Um, also a waiver for a comprehensive parking and circulation plan. It looks like there's really no parking happening. Anything to add to that?
No, same, same kind of thing. Uh, we sent it to the fire department. We're not obstructing the existing fire access lanes. That'll be maintained, uh, there's no change in the employees or use of the site, so. There would be no impact to the traffic or circulation elsewhere on that property.
Okay, uh, any board members have a concern with that waiver?
I don't.
Okay, doesn't sound like anything there. Uh, the waiver to submit a detailed operations and maintenance plan is part of the stormwater management system design. Uh, I think we talked about that a little bit already, board members, thoughts on that?
I wanted to ask Josh, Josh's input if, if what they say they're gonna do covers what he wanted. Cause his, his recommendation had to do something with the stormwater and operation.
I did uh craft that condition of approval based on his, his letter. So that's what he had specifically requested.
Yeah, I think if they're doing one for the entire site, then that's, you know, that's fine to waive that as long as that. Um, in the waiver that is somewhere agreed to.
Agreed.
Okay, uh, waiver, the requirement for a lighting plan, seems like nothing is changing there, is that the case?
Yep, uh, the the lighting uh back there is mostly building mounted lighting on the back of the building. Uh, we're not proposing really to alter that in any way. Uh, there's a dense buffer along the highway, so really there would be no light spillage. Uh, any place from the the rear area of the site, so.
Are you, are you adding lights above the the pad, or there's no lights out around the pad?
I believe there will be lighting maybe under the canopy, but nothing outward facing that would cast uh lights beyond the perimeter of the canopy. Uh, Modi may be able to provide a little more input on under canopy lighting that we have there.
We provide under canopy lighting, not that we're gonna be using this, yeah, during night or anything, but they're just. Uh, for folks if they need to uh, do in the pad for in the region, but outside the canopy, there is no light, there will be no activity during that time.
Any board members have issues with the waiver for lighting plan?
You're not, no.
Uh, waiver for landscape plan. Anything there? Appears no real addition of trees or anything.
Yep, uh, same kind of context, this is the back of house operations, uh, not really available to the public. Uh, there is a dense landscape buffer as well, so uh, we're not encroaching any closer to any of that. Uh, so really maintaining all that existing landscaping that's there today.
Okay, any board issues with that waiver?
You're not.
Okay, and finally, waiver, the requirement for a development impact analysis, and for that one, your thoughts on that one?
Uh, so that's essentially just kind of the more robust uh analysis that you do for a larger project that generates, you know, additional traffic. Large-scale development changes in previous area. Uh, again, this is a small, you know, twenty-five-hundred square foot. Uh, concrete pad with a roof outside the building. Uh, with some interior building renovations, so really a minimal change, and it's already uh. Being developed under the existing master plan, so everything's consistent with uh previous large-scale analysis, which includes MIPA studies and otherwise. So really, it's consistent with the overall master plan.
Okay, any board um questions or issues with that one?
No. No, although I I do wanna, I I think something that Josh brought up was there isn't a renewed site, a master plan for the site. Right, so um, you know, I I would say this one as well, we would sort of want a. You know, i- if your development impact plan is based on your master plan, but your master plan is going to change. You know, how much changes is in that new master plan, and does that, is that going to require? Some type of impact analysis, might be a question for Josh.
Okay, Laurie, any preliminary thoughts on that in your experience?
Um, I have not yet heard uh what they're, what they're planning on doing. As far as the master plan that was approved in two thousand and seven is concerned. Of course, uh, that was supposed to be a fifteen-year plan, and we're beyond that at this point. So I I know that that's uh something that you had asked for, Carrie, and an update on the master plan. And I believe that you're prepared to provide that. Um, and then I also included a condition of approval requiring a written submission. Uh, that would update the master plan. So are you prepared to discuss that tonight, or no?
Yeah, certainly, on a, on a very high level, we're happy to walk through the work that has happened to date on the site. Uh, and then just highlight some of the uh, the the preliminary uh plans for what's in the immediate future. Uh, as it relates to a more comprehensive update to the master plan. Uh, we're happy to work with the the town and the planning department, identify, you know, what that looks like, what you're looking for in terms of detail and information, as well as. Uh, you know, modifications relative to the previous one. Uh, I think everything will still be consistent within the overall development plan under that new one. Just the phasing and the sequencing and the timing might be a little bit different in terms of, you know, how it was proposed to be executed.
Uh, I I would like to share one concern that I have. Um, so of course, our regulations uh are updated on a regular basis. And so the regulations that were in place in two thousand and seven are no longer in place today. It was a comprehensive update to the zoning bylaws that was approved in, I believe, two thousand and nine. So, I would have concerns about a um, the lack of a horizon. On this master plan, um, you know, it should have expired two years ago. So, my recommendation to the planning board would be. That maybe you should go through that permitting process again to update your plans. Um, but that's just a a comment that I have, I mean, if there's. Plans to start construction in the near future. Then um, maybe they'd consider continuing with the other master plan, but if this is something that's gonna take. Place five years, ten years, fifteen years from now, then I I really don't think that that's appropriate. Uh, there should be an update that reflects the fact that our regulations have changed.
Okay, so does that impact what the applicant would be providing, Laurie, in your mind?
Well, I I'm interested in hearing what they have to say, um, but I, you know, I. I have concerns, if you're saying, okay, well, you know, we were supposed to build three more buildings. It's already been eighteen years and it's gonna be another eighteen years before these buildings are built. I don't think that that would be appropriate, there should be a lapse.
Speak to that or?
Yeah, sure, I'm 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 happy if uh, if you'd like to, we can move over to just kind of where we are with the history of what we've done to date. And very high level of the immediate plans, uh, if we think we're done with the conversation on the spray lab uh component of the meeting today.
Okay, so let's wrap that up then. Um, it sounds like overall, there's not a whole lot of resistance to the waivers. Um, I do think uh the board is looking for uh just some additional. Review on the chemicals and, uh, so maybe that requires. I I'm not sure this list will help Josh, if it's not an exact list of what's going to be used on the outdoors, in the outdoors area. I'm not sure, maybe that's a conversation with, a further conversation with Josh. But I think the board's looking for a little more detail on that, the chemical piece of it, and then um. Just some sort of acknowledgement from the fire chief that he's looked at it, he has no comments. Uh, board members, is, was there anything else that we're looking for, so the applicant knows what to expect at the next meeting?
Yeah, and even with groundwater, like Fred not only looks at the outdoor chemicals, but what's stored inside, like this new spray lab. What's gonna be stored in there in the cabinets, or if everything's going into this hazardous waste room that you have, just. What is in there? Just show that. Like, like he wasn't, Fred wasn't always just concerned with outside, it was inside too. And maybe it's laid out in here.
Yeah, it should all be in that Tetra Tech report, yeah.
Okay.
And they, the the lab owners won't be able to deviate what's listed on table three for the outside pad.
Okay. Alright, so I guess that would go back to Josh too, if he's all, if he's okay with the chemicals in the rooms that they're in and. The containers that they're in.
Is that something that the fire chief looks at as well, by any chance? Yeah, so that would be something, we just wanna make sure they looked at it.
Uh, the fire chief has a list of all hazardous materials that are used.
On site?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, and then, so we are. In a public hearing, but I don't see any public comments, I'll just pause for that as well. I don't see any public comments, I just wanna make a call for them, no public comments, okay. Alright, so before we carry on to the applicant, um, the master plan stuff, um, does that give you guys a sense? Do you feel like you have what you need, and then of course, in the end, we'll vote to continue, but does that give you an idea of what we're, what we're looking for when you come back around?
Yeah, certainly, I I think uh we'd be looking for feedback from, from the town. If there are any questions or comments that comes up through the review. Uh, by the other folks, you wanna have a more detailed review, uh, we're happy to provide any additional information that you need. Uh, that helps assist with that review.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Okay, so master plan, flipping over to that, that'd be great, if you wanna speak to that.
Sure, and this is uh, this will be a high-level overview of the master plan, uh, not really intended to, you know. Provide the detail that you would wanna see in a formal, you know, update or an amendment, just more of a update on what's happened to date. Uh, and the context of the original master plan. Uh, so the master plan was submitted, uh, it was approved back in two thousand and seven for the overall development of the site. Uh, which included the work in Northborough as well as Marlborough, uh, up to development of about three hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred square feet. Uh, with seven hundred thirty parking spaces uh laid out throughout the site as shown here. Uh, and then I'll walk through just the history, uh, with some aerial photographs for the underlays. Uh, at the time of two thousand and five, prior to the work being implemented. Uh, we used Google Earth, just going back in history, overlaid the master plan, you can see faded uh in the foreground here. Uh, showing the existing buildings that were present at the time of the master plan development. Uh, as well as some of the parking around the perimeter, as well as parking uh on the westly side here, again, we have. The uh Route two ninety uh off-ramps located here as well. So at, at the time, sorry, it's about two hundred five thousand square feet of development there at the time. So the additional development was intended to be developed over that fifteen-year timeline, uh, which we understand we're just outside of at this point. Uh, so in the uh, the first phase of development that we saw in two thousand and seven, uh, there was development of a, a building here. Uh, so in the uh, the first phase of development that we saw in two thousand seven, uh, there was development of a, a building here. Uh, on the other town line here, this was uh the building five construction, as well as some associated parking that was located on this edge. Uh, consistent with the original master plan. Uh, as well as two smaller buildings that were located just outside the existing building located. Uh, both to the north, as well as to the northwest of the existing building here. Uh, some of the parking was built out along this edge at the time, fairly consistent with the original master plan development. Uh, and then if you need some additional detail, feel free to, to jump in if there's any questions along the way, and John, that'd be able to provide some more. Uh, back of the field, detailed questions on what some of these buildings were at the time. Two thousand eight, uh, the next portion of the development that was uh constructed was the parking area along the easterly edge. Uh, again, in the town of Marlborough here, they also constructed some of the stormwater detention facilities to account for the additional runoff. Uh, consistent with the master plan, very closely aligned with what was originally proposed back in two thousand seven. Uh, and this parking has been operational and in use uh since it has been constructed. In two thousand ten or just prior to two thousand ten, you can see the completion of one of the other buildings. It was also part of the master plan here, contemplated as part of the first phase. Uh, so with that, also the first parking, that you see anybody familiar with the site as you come in. Uh, this is essentially the visitor and the guest parking that you have here, uh, as well as the new building that was built in two thousand ten. Uh, again, very consistent with the master plan at that time. Uh, the current conditions that we have today, uh, which really reflects the development of, you know, this building, this building. Uh, we have this building, uh, as well as the parking along the edge here. Uh, which is a little bit less than what was originally contemplated with the stormwater detention in the front. And then we have the parking along the outside edge here of the stormwater in the back. Uh, some of the parking that was contemplated on the parcel across the street on Goddard Road. Uh, hasn't been constructed and there's currently no intention to do so. Uh, so you could see in the uh, the background as well, there was originally a, a building contemplated here along the frontage. Uh, which hasn't been built and I don't believe there's any immediate plans to, to build that in the short term future. Uh, the project that we were speaking of earlier, the spray lab is located in the rear of the building here as well. So essentially tucked into this corner, uh, where there was gonna be some buildings proposed along the rear of the property as well. Uh, so at this point, uh, the, the current site, I misspoke earlier, it wasn't two hundred five thousand square feet. Prior to the master plan, I believe it was closer to a hundred thousand square feet. So there's been about a hundred thousand square feet that have been built over that time. So as the site currently exists today, it's about two hundred five thousand square feet with four hundred ninety-six parking spaces. Compared to the uh overall development program that was approved and permitted for three hundred seventy-nine thousand square feet and seven hundred thirty parking spaces. So staying pretty close to that ratio for parking to square footage. Uh, but significantly less than the overall development uh density that was approved under the master plan. Uh, and then in the next slide here, uh, we're highlighting a, a project that was uh. A fire lab that was uh reviewed and approved through the, the town of Marlborough here. We did meet with the uh, some representatives uh from our town here. Uh, back in two thousand three, uh, in February, just to present the project and identify if there was any permitting or any work needed to be done as it related to that. Working very closely with the fire departments and the various uh agencies to make sure that the services would be provided uh across various town lines. Uh, because they are shared for portions of the property here, uh, so that was all evaluated back in two thousand twenty-three. This is roughly a twenty thousand square foot building entirely contained on the adjacent town. Uh, with some site uh circulation and access around the rear of the property. Uh, this one is permitted and approved, uh, construction would be anticipated for this one to start in the near term. Uh, and then there was also uh a plan for some additional work here in the rear of the property. Uh, John, maybe you would speak a little bit to what might be contemplated there.
Yeah, we're looking to renovate uh the oldest building, building one, but it's a hundred percent full, so the thought was to um. Put an office building where that red rectangle is, move some people in there and then begin renovations of building one. Uh, we haven't received funding from uh corporate headquarters just yet and probably. Won't we see that for quite some time, at least six months? And once we receive funding, then we can start with the engineering and design. But yeah, other than that, there's no real, no other plan to expand the campus. Sorry, Carlos.
No, and I was gonna say, e- even with that additional development there, still be well below the overall density approved under the master plan. Uh, but certainly welcome, any comments you may have, or if there's additional information or details that relates to. How to handle the timeline, uh, that was identified in the original uh master plan approval.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Can you provide me with that? Oh, I'm sorry. Can you provide a copy of this presentation for the file?
Yeah, certainly happy to, uh, we could send a copy of the PDF to Laurie, uh, for your records.
Thank you. Sorry, Amy.
My question's probably for you, Laurie, um, we've never had, at least as long as I've been here, a master plan project. So does that mean, Laurie, that they come up with a master plan and so the permits don't expire? It's kind of like a fifteen year build out and, and the permits just don't have to be extended, they stay valid?
So that's kind of my concern, actually. Um, because I have not also been uh. Been experienced in a, a master plan like this that has a fifteen year horizon. Uh, so typically, my experience is you're permitted, you start construction. Um, and then eventually, if the project isn't completed, then you, you're kinda done, you know? And then you move on to the next uh application, so if at some point in the future, you decide that you wanna. Proceed um with the development, say ten, fifteen years later. Then you would file at that time, so that, that's been my professional experience in the past. Um, so. Uh, from what I'm hearing, you're saying that you've got this uh, this building, they, you, and additional parking modifications. That you're planning on doing in Marlborough, and then you would like to renovate uh that building number one. And then you're, you're pretty much done under the two thousand seven permit, is, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, unless we come up with a master plan, unless we update it and work off of that, and.
Right, and, and I think just, just for context, when, when we see the master plans on developments, uh, such as this one. Where I think that the town wants to and the state and everybody wants to know what the overall impact could be of the larger development instead of piecemealing. Now, here's a ten thousand square foot building, here's a twenty thousand square foot building. The master plan process allows and allowed the towns, uh, both towns as well as the state. To review of what the overall impacts of the development as a whole might be. Uh, and then the applicant, Saint Obain, for each development as they come in, we're still in front of the town for a review and approval of a site plan. Uh, or a special permit for the various projects as they come in front of the town. So it certainly doesn't remove the ability of the town to provide input and shape each individual development as they come in. Uh, it was more of a mechanism to allow the overall development and any sort of potential impacts and mitigation to be evaluated. Uh, from the overall development as a whole, so in, in that context. I think that was a large part of what the master plan process was intended to accomplish.
I mean, this is what should have been done at Bartlett, so thank you for sticking with it and providing this, I'm, I think. Concerns aside, and it sounds like there's still the approval process, so that's good, um, I think the level of transparency is appreciated.
Agree.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, any other, any questions about this? Okay, so wait, so then getting, Laura, I know you had an original um comment, so if this is to be updated. You're again just showing like the overall. If you, if you update this in a more formal way, you're just showing the overall picture, but every piece, every that goes forward still goes through the process, so it's. So it would be according to today's bylaws and changes and things like that.
Right.
Got it. Okay, anything else on this one? Alright, so why don't we, uh, we need to figure out in terms of continuing. So based on hearing some of the things we get, we need to solve before the next time around. Our options for upcoming meetings are, and so we're not meeting. One of our meetings is election day, so we don't meet then, so we have October fifteenth, November nineteenth. And those are the next two coming up.
We'd certainly like to see what we can do to keep this moving along, we certainly know that uh, the applicant uh would love to be able to move this forward. If there's anything that you need from us to the help facilitate a discussion, or if you'd like to set the meeting in the interim with uh anybody at the town, we'd be happy to accommodate that. Uh, if there is any chance just to continue to the next available meeting, uh, we'd certainly like to take that.
Uh, Laurie, based on having Fred get involved on our side, um, do you think that's a, a couple of weeks is all we need, or you think it's gonna be longer than that?
I think a couple of weeks should be adequate.
Okay, Modi, you have something there, catch up.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, uh, one thing is that uh, when this project got kicked off. Uh, we were under the impression that the pad did not need a site permit. But then it was clarified to us from the building department that since the pad is more than one thousand square foot, that it had to go through a site permit. So unfortunately, uh, the comment called the entire process by surprise. And we started the uh, you know, we put in a lot of intense effort to try to present forward as much information as possible to. Keep the process going and, you know, obtain the site permit, you know, so we don't hold up the. Uh, the project through the winter season, so any, any, anything you can help us with to uh. You know, put us in the next meeting would be greatly appreciated, and we'll do everything we can to cooperate and give you all the information you need to uh, to make a formal decision.
Okay, great, I really appreciate your transparency there, um, it sounds like maybe, well. Uh, worst case, so if we book October fifteenth, it's at least there, and if for some reason we can't make it, well, you can always, we can always continue. Again, but it sounds like, um, Laura, do we have any other applications on the fifteenth?
No, we don't.
Okay. So we could continue to six P M on the fifteenth, does that work for everybody? Okay, so in that case, is there a motion to continue the public hearing for Nine Goddard Road for a special permit for ground water protection overlay district and site plan approval? For construction of a demonstration pad with canopy and associated improvements to October fifteenth at six P M? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy? Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, great, so we'll see you back on October fifteenth, and then I think the right person to be in touch with after this is Laurie. It sounds like is that your right person to follow up with on next step?
Yes, please.
Okay. So that's the right path.
Alright, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Very much for your time. Good night.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a um. Release of Lexon Insurance Company subdivision performance bond, number one-one-four-nine-one-six-four, in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand. For Harrington Lane. So, let's see. Just pulling up a copy of that here, Laurie, anything to say on this one?
No, um, so at the last meeting, you released one of the performance bonds, there were two. So, uh, of course, Harrington Lane is complete, uh, the roadway has been transferred to the town of Northborough. Uh, so the developer is one hundred percent done.
Okay, any board questions on this?
No.
No? Okay, so with that. Uh, hold on one second, here, just have a lot of. Pad running. What's going on, I need? Okay. So, is there a motion to release Lexon Insurance Company subdivision performance bond, number one-one-four-nine-one-six-four, in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand? For the completion of Harrington Lane, the roadway is complete and ownership has been transferred to the town. Second? Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, moving along to old business, so that passes, um, bond will be released. Moving on to old business, we have um minutes for approval from September seventeenth, does everyone have a chance to read them enough?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, um, are there any amendments to the minute?
Not for me.
Is there a motion to approve the minute from September seventeenth as submitted?
I moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Here. Aye.
And Carrie's abstained, I also wasn't here, so minutes passed, that's great. Next on the agenda, any subcommittee update? Um, yes. Okay, next planning board meeting, we have, as we mentioned, we have the fifteenth, obviously. Uh, we're skipping November fifth for lunch, election day, and then Laurie, you had, um, November nineteenth, we have a applicant coming that night. And then you had asked the board about some dates for a possible um joint meeting for, with C M R P C. So did we wanna talk about that quickly now to figure out a good time that works? I think you had proposed a couple in December.
Yes, um, so I had suggested. Uh, the, the first Wednesday in September, that's December fourth. As well as the second Wednesday in December, December eleventh, and the Thursday, which is the twelfth. If you could let me know all of the dates that work for you, cause it, it really is a challenge finding. A date that works for seventeen people.
Wait, which, which did you give? You gave the, the fourth, the eleventh, and the seventeen?
Uh, the fourth, the eleventh, and the twelfth.
Oh, oh. Do you wanna verbally hear that now, or do you want people to reply to an email?
If you could reply right now, that would be great. If all of you say that all of those dates are fabulous, that would. Make my life super easy.
All are free for me.
I can do that. Anthony already responded, so I, I have yours recorded.
Okay. I'm free and all, three.
Amy, you're not available on the fourth?
I'm not a hundred percent right now, but the eleventh and twelfth should be okay.
Okay, Millie, how about you?
The only thing I don't know if on that Thursday, I might have a CPC. Or possibly N P I C, we don't, it's usually on the Thursday, but.
We have neither. I specifically chose it to be in between those meetings.
Okay, I'm open then.
All three, Millie, or just eleven, twelve? Okay, so you have, it sounds like the board can accommodate all three, except maybe Amy can't do December four, to be d.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
And. Uh, and then we have um, the next Z B A meeting, October twenty-second, anything there?
Um, let's see, I, I do not believe that we have an application for uh, Z B A. Okay, I can't think of one off the top of my head.
Okay, and then N P I C, November twenty-first. Now, Amy, I know you had a proposed bylaw, is that something we could put on the agenda for next time?
Yeah, that'll give people time to read it.
Okay. So that would be great, and then. If there's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, have a great night, everyone, thanks.
Thank you.